First, thank you all for being here. Second, thank you to Lisa Phipps, AAUW Tillamook Branches Public Policy Chair, for spearheading this. And Tillamook Headlight Herald for being our cosponsor. And voter education, voter empowerment, civic involvement are all very important to AAUW's mission. So we're very happy to be able to help host this event. And as Lisa said, I hope you all have questions to ask, and I look forward to hearing from all of our candidates.
And then we have a word from our sponsor. One of our partners, the Tillamook Headlight Herald, Joe Warren.
I just wanted to let the candidates know we have plenty of lecture packages. Headlight Herald, thanks for being here, everybody. And we wanted to partner with AAUW because they bring the best food, so I thought that'd be good. And I'd like to thank the Chamber too. Justin from the Chamber is here, he's also helping us with this forum. He's live streaming it right now. If you get home and you need to get on your phone and watch it, or your tablet, you can download the app, it's Periscope, and watch it. We'll have it embedded on our website as well, so you can watch it two weeks from now if you like, and revisit it, so, welcome.
Because if tonight isn't fun enough, you can relive it over and over. And because this is a half-sponsored AAUW event, I'd like Andrea Goss to come up here real quick and do a shameless plug for us.
She kind of took my words away, so it's partly AAUW, shameless plug. So, once a year, I'm going to give you a very short speech about what AAUW does, because I could go on for hours about all the things we do. But basically, we empower women and girls. AAUW across the country does these things. We join with federal, but here in Tillamook, we just do a lot for young women and for older women, girls. And once a year, we have a fundraiser, so that we can raise enough money to give scholarships to high school girls and college women as well. It's called our Wine and Chocolate Affair, and if you've never been, it's really quite nice. So it's going to be on Sunday, May 15th, at the Officers' Mess Hall at the Port of Tillamook Bay. It's $25 per person, 100% of the money goes to scholarships. I do have some tickets here tonight, but I just would like you to put this on your calendar and come and join us, it's really a nice event. Thank you.
And then I would like to thank all the folks at AAUW. They always make it look so easy for me, because all I have to do is show up. They did all that wonderful food, they put up things that I forget about, like, you know, we're AAUW, little details that they keep me on track for, and they always do a wonderful job, and I appreciate them very much. And again, thank you very much to the Tillamook Headlight Herald for partnering with us, and for the Chamber for live-streaming this for us tonight. And so we're going to get started. Okay, candidates, so here's how this evening goes. We're going to start out with an introduction from each candidate, it will last about, it will last no longer than three minutes, let me put it that way. Lori is the timekeeper, she's sitting up front. And what she's going to do during this section is she'll show you the purple card, that's one minute left, 30 seconds, and then 10, you need to be wrapping up, because I will cut you off. The next set of, the next step will be your questions. Each candidate will have one minute to answer the question. Even if you have specifically pointed your question towards a candidate, we will probably, unless it's very particular to that person, we will probably allow every candidate to answer that question. Because I'm sure, although you might be interested in your favorite candidate, you should hear what everybody has to say. So we're going to get started, and we're just going to go down the line for this initial part, and we'll start with Belinda Williams.
Hello, my name is Belinda Williams. I don't think that's on. Okay, closer. All right, I'll try it again. My name's Belinda Williams, and I'm running for Tillamook County Commissioner, position one. I'm a local business owner, wife and mother of four. I am experienced in managing budgets, collaborating with different peoples, managing projects, and working to create value. I am eager to learn, I love a challenge. I am involved in various community organizations, am actively building my business, and I currently serve on the Tillamook County Parks Advisory Committee. I am unbelievably blessed to call this beautiful county home, and I have a passion for her people. As your commissioner, I will advocate for transparency in the operations of your county government. I will actively seek to ensure all voices are heard and lines of communication are open between county departments, community organizations, and citizens. I'm not afraid to fight for what I believe is right, and what is right for the citizens and visitors of Tillamook County. In addition, I will lead a collaborative effort to develop a comprehensive county-wide vision for the future of Tillamook County, drawing north, central, and south county together to meet the needs of all segments of our growing population, with a focus on encouraging a vibrant economy with living wage jobs, affordable housing, a sound infrastructure, while preserving our heritage and our legacy. And managing our resources with the responsibility that they are due. Ensuring our retirees, our professionals, our working families, our children have the resources available to them, not only to live, but to grow and thrive. Thank you.
Commissioner Bartline?
Hello, Commissioner Bartline, I'm the incumbent, and I'm also running for position number one. And I want to take the time right now to thank Tillamook AAUW for hosting the forum. I really appreciate this, it's a chance to get our ideas out. So, quick history about Bill. I was born in Tillamook, raised in Tillamook. My great-grandmother's Weber, the Webers trace back to the original pioneers in Tillamook. I went through Tillamook Catholic High School, went on to Oregon State University, where I got my Bachelor of Science degree in accounting, with a minor in applied mathematics. I came back to my home, to devote my life here, and to grow a family here. I became a CPA, opened my own CPA practice. My wife Marilyn is also a CPA, joined me in that practice. We have developed a very successful accounting firm. We have over 600 clients. When I retired, I retired to become the commissioner. Many small businesses that we've helped grow into large businesses, many dairy farms that we've helped grow and make it through some of the recession times and some of the good times. I have personally audited most of the cities and school districts in Tillamook County as a municipal auditor. I have a kind on their record, and I have a strong knowledge of municipal audit law. I sit on the following nonprofit boards. Columbia Pacific Coordinated Care Organization. That's an organization that has Tillamook, Columbia, and Clatso County as their constituents, basically. I was asked to be on that board, because I'm a county commissioner, and because of my CPA certificate, which has opened a lot of doors for me. That organization has almost a $200 million budget, and has been an active partner in my year, or our year of wellness in Tillamook County. I sit on the Northwest Seniors and Disabilities Board, where I was president last year. Northwest Seniors and Disabilities provides programs for our seniors and those disabled in our community. I sit on the Northwest Oregon Housing Authority Board. This board provides Section 8 vouchers for Tillamook County, for those that are in need of some housing help. I sit on the Community Action Team out of St. Helens, and that partners with CARE. I sit on Northwest Oregon Workforce Investment Board, trying to train our employees to become, our citizens to become better employees. We coordinate with the businesses in town. Locally, I was past president of the YMCA twice, once in '86, and once last year. I sit on the Pioneer Museum Board, and I'm active on the Kelches Point Trail. I sit on statewide committees representing our county in forestry, housing, health, human services, and I'm liaison to 12 departments and taxing districts. I'm also champion for the Year of Wellness and chair the task force. I am champion and chair for the Housing Task Force in Tillamook County, and I'm actively working on rails and trails to banks, from Banks to Tillamook. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bartline. So you see, you can get a lot in three minutes, but it also goes by very fast.
Thank you. I believe that's, yeah, that's Karen. Shayna Peterson, position number two. And I think a lot of you know me, and I'm just going to ask, you know, for me, what matters most? Family and friends, the environment, good schools, opportunities for our children. I believe that instead of figuring out how to cut costs, we should figure out how to manage, pardon me, fund what matters most, and that should be our focus. The county's proven that it can accomplish many things with public-private partnerships, the Pavilion over at the Fairground, the Future Ag and Natural Resources, I should say Partners for Rural Innovation, that's happening right here across the road at the college. I think that we need to encourage those partnerships. For instance, if you want a pristine watershed, are you willing to consolidate water districts so you have the funding, that you can have the ability to make that happen? I think it can be done, you can have more bargaining power that way. I'm connected with people through radio, social media, Facebook, face-to-face, and the majority are thoughtful and kind. I think people have reasonable expectations, I truly do. Tillamook County is a wonderful place, it's full of unique communities, and we should encourage them to develop and deliver their own solutions. A 20-unit subdivision on a couple acres where the average price of a tiny home is $25,000, a nano-obic digester powering neighboring homes and businesses. I think recognizing there's a problem is not the same as being willing to fix it. I think we tend to fund activities rather than outcomes. And still, I think if you establish a measurable outcome, 200 additional affordable homes by 2018, and a timetable to complete, and then identify the existing barriers and remove them, and that's how you can get things done. And I'm really looking, it's wonderful to see everyone, and I'm looking forward to this evening.
All right, is it, is my phone working? I can't answer that question.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself, and thank you all for being here tonight. My name is Jennifer Purcell, I'm running for Tillamook County Commissioner, position number two. The most important thing I want you to know about me is that I am deeply committed to my family and my community. My husband Mike and I have been married for 24 years, we have three children, two are now in college, and one is a senior at Nea County High School. We currently live in Bay City and have been in Tillamook County for 12 years. In addition to being part of an active family, I've held a number of leadership positions throughout Tillamook County. I'm a member of the Tillamook County Futures Council, currently serving as the vice-chair. I'm a former member of the Tillamook County Parks Advisory Committee. I am a board member for the Tillamook Area Chamber of Commerce, having served as president in 2012 and 2013. I'm the former event coordinator for an event called "The Taste of Tillamook County", and I'm the parent representative to the Nea County High School Site Council, and currently a member of the Nea County School District Budget Committee. I've spent the last 10 years of my career in the public sector, working for Tillamook County as the Solid Waste Program Coordinator, and currently I work as Oregon Department of Environmental Qualities, representative on the North Coast Regional Solutions Team. As an employee of Tillamook County, I had the opportunity to represent both Tillamook County as well as the interests of rural communities on a variety of statewide issues. And currently, I represent DEQ in Tillamook, Clatso, and Columbia counties, but I also represent Tillamook County, the North Coast, and our coastal communities within DEQ. I am well-versed in both the public and private sector. I'm a former small business owner, my husband and I owned and operated a restaurant for a number of years. And I also bring to the position of county commissioner 20 years' experience in strategic planning, project coordination, and organizational development. As county commissioner, I will work to ensure opportunities for our citizens, focusing on growing our economy and protecting our quality of life. Our quality of life depends on a healthy economy and healthy communities. And our economy depends on quality infrastructure and a trained workforce. We also rely on our small businesses and entrepreneurs who are willing to invest in their ideas and their communities, and I will work to strengthen community partnerships in the area of economic development and education. Tillamook County is a diverse community of communities, yet we share a resilient spirit and a collaborative work ethic, and I look forward to working together to find solutions to tough issues. In closing, I care about the people and places of Tillamook County, I care about economic development and community vitality, I have a unique set of skills and experience that qualifies me to represent Tillamook County well, and it would be my privilege to represent you as your next county commissioner.
Dana?
Thank you, Lisa, and I want to thank everyone for taking time out of their busy schedules to come to this candidate's forum this evening. For the record, I'm Dave Yamamoto, I'm a resident of Civic City. I spent, I have a Bachelor of Arts degree in psychology, and spent 20, the first 23 years of my working life in the forest products industry. So I think I know timber fairly well. The past 20-plus years here in Oregon, I have spent as a long-term care specialist, sitting across the kitchen table with families, discussing what might happen as they continue to get older. And I'm currently also an Oregon real estate broker. Tillamook County has been a very, very easy place for me to become very involved. A little bit of unashamed promotion, if you picked up my flyer, which is on the back table, and look inside, there was a list of over 20 civic organizations and government committees that I have been working on for quite a few years. If you look at that list, you'll see that the list includes land use planning, ocean policy, visioning, transportation, healthcare, senior issues, economic development, and emergency preparedness, so this lists just a few. I think you'll see that that's a broad scope of involvement, and it's been throughout Tillamook County and the Pacific Northwest, especially with the Northwest Area Commission on Transportation. We're dealing with not only Tillamook County, but Clatso County, and parts of Washington County, and Columbia County. Most important, I think, is having a common sense approach to the issues that face Tillamook County, along with the ability to listen. The collaborative approach, I feel, is very important. I feel it's very important to give back to the community that has offered me so much. The greatest asset that Tillamook County has are its people. And when you look at the people in this room and throughout Tillamook County, I think you'll find we're all looking for the same things. We all want to work hard, become productive citizens in Tillamook County. We want a good education for our children. We want to be able to know that our children can have a better life than we have. And we also want to know that our parents, our elderly friends and relatives can be well taken care of. I feel very strongly, with a 20-plus-year history in long-term care, that we must honor our seniors. So, I think I'll offer a fresh voice for leadership in Tillamook County. I will endeavor to work harder and smarter for all areas of Tillamook County. Let's get down to business, I think I'm ready to serve you. Thank you.
Mayor Burton?
Good evening, my name's Stevie Stevens-Burden, and I'm currently serving as the mayor of Wheeler, and I just got to take a quick hi you guys in the back, so it's not just a nippy space talking. I think it's slightly different approach to this than my esteemed colleagues here. And, you know, Shayna and I are mayors together, Jennifer and I work on issues that come before the Northwest Regional Team, and Dave and I serve on the Northwest Area Commission on Transportation. But for me, my 18-year-old cousin's daughter came up with my campaign slogan, and it's "Let's Get Real." Responsive, experienced, active leadership. So, what I think the real question is tonight, is you're going to ask us about content and questions that you care about, and that you're passionate about, to see if the way we answer meets up with your views. And I really respect that so many of you came in to do that, because I think it's a really important part of the democratic process. But the real thing going on here is, you're really asking, can you trust the person in the front of the room to move forward without asking you again, and trust them with your one and only vote in many matters? Because, you know, while we love the democratic process, we're a republic. We vote for people that we trust to go forward and make decisions for us. And I take that very seriously. Five years ago, I was diagnosed with a disease that gave me a 50/50 chance of living out 10 years, and that kind of stops you when you're in your 50s, and you go, whoa, I better take some things seriously. And so, much to the chagrin of my attorney, instead of writing out a will that listed my assets and materials distribution, I decided what I wanted my children and grandchildren to have was my ethical will, because that's what's important to me, to pass on. And that's what I bring to the table as a candidate. Integrity, respect, honesty, compassion, ingenuity, self-reliance, creativity, a little bit of humor, interdependence, reciprocity, diversity, service and stewardship, loyalty, and to be a lifelong learner. And if you want to know who you're going to vote for, if you vote for me, my code of ethics is on the back, and I challenge you to not only read it, it was published on upper-left edge in 2013, it's not new, I've been walking this talk for a long time. And if I'm elected, I invite you to hold me accountable for everything that you read in that, because that's really who I am and what I want to bring to your table. Would really think I could be an excellent commissioner for you, if you give me the chance, and your one vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I hope this doesn't sound too political, but this is quite a refreshing change, from what we've been watching as the higher... So, the questions. First off, I want to thank everybody, your questions are very politely written, some are a little verbose, I may bring them down a little bit, but hopefully we'll keep the intent of the question alive. Each candidate will have one minute. When we go through, we'll start, the first question with Ms. Williams, then the second question will start with Commissioner Bartline, and so on. I'll ask that the audience allow each candidate to finish. They will treat you with respect, and you will treat them with respect. I will make sure of that. So, these are in no particular order. I did try to pull together questions that were similar, to avoid a lot of repetition. If I've missed one, I apologize. But we're just going to start out with the hardest one. No, I'm kidding. So, the first question is, how many boards and positions, and you've all touched on this a little bit, so feel free to reference what you've already said, okay? And the other thing is, these questions run the gamut of issues, some federal, some local, so you know, how you answer them is also part of how people are going to be evaluating your run for candidacy. So, how many boards and positions are you involved in, and how would you fit the demands of the commissioner's duties into your schedule?
I am currently serving on just the Parks Committee here, but I am active in many of my children's activities. And the way that I will fit this into my schedule is that this will be my job, and I will arrange my family's life around the needs of the position.
Thank you. Commissioner Bartline?
I kind of read through all of the boards and things that I've been sitting on and working on. It is a difficult thing, because you do have to learn to say no, and I have learned to say no over time. The ones that I get the most satisfaction out of right now are the ones working with the people in the county. The Year of Wellness, I think that's a fun one to be on, and we're moving the health needle a little better forward in the community, and the housing needs assessment that I've been working on. I think that that's going to be a game-changer for Tillamook, because we can move forward. We have $100,000 in a business partnership agreement kind of a deal, that we're working to look at what's causing the housing shortage in Tillamook County. Is it the planning and zoning rules, which are coming up? Is it the system development charges that are hitting everybody? So, you know, you have to take your time, you have to focus on what you want to do. And those seems to be the areas now that I've been tasked with. I gotta put a look in at the cars.
Mayor Peterson?
Thank you. Presently, I've been on the Bay City Council for 19 years, I've been mayor there for 13 years, and that's better. Thank you, Justin. Presently, I'm on the Oregon Coast City Railroads Board. I passed, I was on the Tillamook Gestuaries Partnership Board, and Tillamook Bay Watershed Council. The mayor's position takes a lot of time, but it's a great position. We have our regular meetings in those, but there's so many things, whether it be Parks, I wrote the Parks Master Plan in 2000. Some of the things I've been, 98, the Neighborhood Watch, which is still has some strength in Bay City. But anyway, it's, I think, and now, of course, I'm general manager, I don't know that that is, but what I learned with Tillamook today, and getting to visit every day with people is wonderful. Thank you.
In my opening remarks, I mentioned several boards and commissions that I serve on. And I have the fortune of having a narrowing family, as my kids are growing up and leaving the house. That has afforded me the opportunity to continue to be more engaged with our community. I think the board that I am most proud of, the time that I have been able to spend with, is the Chamber of Commerce. The opportunity to support and encourage our small businesses and our entrepreneurs has been some of the most rewarding work that I've done, but also the opportunity as a board member to invest in organizational development of the Tillamook Area Chamber of Commerce has been very rewarding. So, if elected commissioner, it would become my full-time job, and the opportunity to both represent Tillamook County on local organizations, but represent the county on regional and statewide issues would be a privilege.
Thank you. Well, I guess I get the opportunity to read the list of organizations that I belong to. I have been a board member of the Pacific City Woods Citizen Advisory Committee for, I believe, the past six years. I am currently chair of the Pacific City Woods Community Advisory Committee Land Use Committee. I'm chair of the Tillamook County Futures Council, citizen-at-large Northwest Area Commission on Transportation, citizen-at-large Territorial Sea Plan Advisory Committee, also the Territorial Sea Plan Advisory Committee Viewshed and Energy Subcommittee. I was a member of Tillamook County Transient Lodging Tax Committee, which brought the transient lodging tax issue to ballot. I'm a member of the Tillamook County Health and Human Services Community Advisory Council, Tillamook County Economic Development Council, Small Business Advisory Committee, Tillamook County, Oregon State University Envision Coastal Futures Project. I was the 2012 Civic City Nostock Valley Chamber of Commerce Volunteer of the Year.
You need to wrap up, Mr. Yamamoto.
I do, so I've got some more to mention here, but I've been doing all of this and more while working two full-time jobs, as a long-term care specialist, and now as an Oregon State real estate broker. So, I think I can't find time if I'm doing this full-time at the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Burton?
Interestingly, when you're from a town like Wheeler, a lot of times we just sit at the table and change hats, so being a formal member may or may not appear on my resume, but I'm involved in a whole lot of groups. Less now than I used to be. I facilitated as the chairperson Wheeler's Visioning Committee. We have a vision for our community, and now we are redoing our Conference of Land Use Plan, I'm the chair of that. As I said, I sit on the Northwest Area Commission on Transportation. I have run departments for states, where I went to, I was on the National Executive Committee for the National Prevention Network, which were the group of people, one per state, that represented prevention federally. So, on any given year, there are any number of boards that I may be involved in. Just depends on the day in Wheeler.
Thank you very much. So, a timekeeper, if we could do a minute and a half on this next one, because I'm going to combine two questions that really kind of probably blend into one another. So, Commissioner Bartline, you'll start. What are your views on the county's current level of public debt, and how will you keep the county on budget without decreasing services to the taxpayers? I told you that was easy, Ron.
So, my views on the current debt level is, we're actually not in too bad a shape for our debt level. We're in pretty good shape. My concern is, is in our retirement plan. We have a fairly large unfunded liability, our percentage is comparable to hers, and the county has its own retirement plan. That concerns me greatly. That concerns me greatly. This next fiscal year, we will be budgeting 30% of the employees' wages to go into the retirement plan to help start getting us back on track. It'll be a 20-year program before we get it back out of the hole, because we're in a substantial deficit on our retirement plan. The other areas, as our budget has grown, and it grows at 5% a year, this is just historical, our revenues have been going up 3% a year. Well, that's, it doesn't take long before, if you're going up at that level, but you're going to diverge. And we're at that point. We're now at the tipping point for our budget process. We are in, just, I'm not going to say we're in dire straits, but we're in a position where we really need to start looking at where we're spending our money. This last year, we did negotiate some furlough days when our timber revenues weren't coming in where they should be. And we negotiated a new health insurance policy, saving the county quite a bit of funds, around $700,000. But we're still going to be really tight this year. It looks like we're going to be a million dollars in the hole starting off. I mean, our budget expenditures are a million dollars more than our revenues at this point.
Thank you. Mayor?
The current debt level, it's a little bit different. Obviously, our budget, I believe, with the county is around $77 million. I tried to read that 360-page book, but I did not get all the way through it. Bay City's budget is $4 million, and it's been healthy. But one of the things I'm a strong believer in, and it's something I want the city of Bay City to move to, is results-based budgeting instead of the traditional budgeting where you simply realize you have to fund the mandated. So, what you can cut is in other areas. I think what we need to fund and be very specific about is what matters most to people. I think we need to keep asking ourselves, how much did we do? How well did we do it? Is anyone better off? And with that, I think the state of Oregon finally moved away from zero-based budgeting to what they call performance-based budgeting about five years ago. And I think that this is really key to something the county needs to do.
Well, certainly, the county has been facing decreasing timber revenue. And that has increased the share of the taxpayers, the local taxpayers' responsibility within the county budget. County departments are being asked to cut and make the difficult task of choosing what services to provide and where to cut back on the services. And everyone is being asked to do more with less. It's important that we recognize that the county has mandated services that they must provide, but with the, what I would call discretionary revenue after mandated services, it is critical that we understand what the taxpayers consider to be priorities for the spending of those resources. As a former Solid Waste Coordinator for Tillamook County, I oversaw a $2 million budget as well as a $2 million savings account called a sinking fund. In addition to that, I serve on the Nea County School District Budget Committee, and I'm well familiar with making tough choices. I'm dedicated to transparency and accountability, and I'm a firm believer in making informed decisions on behalf of the people of Tillamook County.
Thank you. I do feel that the budget deficit and finances for Tillamook County is really the biggest issue facing us today. It's gotten worse over the past few years, and unfortunately, I think it's staged to become a very, very large issue. We have a $12 million unfunded liability in retirement. We have a Southern Flow Corridor project, which is currently out for bid. It's a $10 million project. The county has decided that they were going to guarantee any cost overruns on the project. When you ask anyone in the county if there is a line item somewhere in the budget that I haven't seen, they say, no, we don't have a line item budget for that. The issue, I think, boils down to family wage jobs. We really do need to keep and restore family wage jobs that we've lost over the decades. We have been a tremendous natural resource-based economy of timber and dairy and fishing. And now, we have a great aspect in tourism, especially in the natural resource-based areas of timber, dairy, and fishing. We really need to support those industries to make sure that we keep those family wage jobs available. Very, very tough choices are coming up. They are. And you've got to be able to make the very, very difficult decisions. And I think I can do that for you. Thank you.
This is a tough question, and it's one of the ones, you know, we all sit around and go, oh, what am I going to say when that comes? And I have to say, you know, what the incumbent CPA commissioner said, probably got to figure that's the best answer in the House, because he lives with that every single day. So, the question for me is, and I'm the mayor of Wheeler. We are not the smallest city in the county. We're the next to the smallest, but I guarantee you, we have the smallest budget in the county. And every single year, we have to, as a community, think about, what are we going to do to meet the shortfalls? There's a lot of talk about TLT and fixing roads and how the cities are going to use that for our infrastructure. We, it's $25,000. It doesn't pay for the public works or the administration it takes just to keep our town going, much less improve or repair or maintain things like roads that we know we need to. I agree with everything you've heard. One of the things that I haven't heard about that really concerns me is that our Public Works Department, LeAnn Welsh, who I think is brilliant, had to use her $800,000 contingency fund to get our roads open after the storm. So, how do we replace those things? Do we just go line by line and cut things out? Or do we sit as a budget and a committee of people and sort through what we want and what we need and go from there?
So, this was actually alluded to in one of your responses. One more. I was just wondering if people were paying attention.[1025.28][1025.28][laughter]
That's a very good question. Thank you. With any budget, regardless of the size, you have your income and you have your expenditures. And your expenditures can't outweigh your income. And I agree with my colleagues here that it's a matter of looking at where we want to go and where, what we want to do. And once we figure that out, we can realign our priorities and see where we need to shift and where we can come together to share costs or to, it comes back to collaboration and working together. But we have to know what we want first. And the only way we know what we want is if you tell us. And then, we work to make that happen.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, as I started, one of you actually alluded to this next question. Recently, an article in the Headlight Herald discussed the Southern Flow Corridor. It revealed that there is a nearly $2 million shortfall in funding and that the county commissioners have declared the county will cover such a shortfall. If elected as a commissioner, how would you have the taxpayers meet this obligation? And we'll start with you, Mayor Peterson.
I've been talking to a lot of people about the Southern Flow Corridor. And I, to answer how it would be funded, that it would be, hopefully, I believe in special districts. I believe that the people that use it the most. But in this Southern Flow Corridor, if it's going to reduce flooding for all, mainly for Tillamook, and I'm going to say it's about the Wilson to the hospital, about is the area that we're talking about. Do we have the people that benefit most? Or does everyone in the county benefit? And I believe that they do. I do not know. I do not have an idea to come up with another $2 million. I've heard plans that it could have been done for less money. I'm a believer that if it could be done for less, you do it for less. And that's, and I'm going to stick with that.
So, as a member of the North Coast Regional Solutions Team, I've been working on the Southern Flow Corridor project for quite some time. And part of the work that we do is to identify funding for projects. And the Southern Flow Corridor project is an excellent example of projects that share federal funding, state funding, as well as local funding. My approach to large, complex projects like this that have multiple benefits are to seek funding opportunities from diverse sources. And this is an example of that. However, the accountability, when that contract is let, the accountability will fall to the county as a contract manager to ensure that the contractors meet their obligations, both in terms of time and budget and outcomes of the project.
Thank you. Yes, the Southern Flow Corridor project, it's a very complex project. It's a good project, but we shouldn't be in a position where we're having to pay for any cost overruns. And cost overruns is only one area that the county is responsible for. They're also responsible for maintenance on this project. And there's a clause in the contract called adaptive management. So, as this project gets built out, they're going to see things that maybe aren't quite right. It could be designed differently to make the project better. That's adaptive management. A change where it would be put in place, that would be considered maintenance. And again, the county is going to be on, have to take care of that budget deficit. So, as Jennifer mentioned, there are many, many different organizations, federal, state, and local, involved in the funding of this project. And I think we really need to dig deeper to figure out exactly where this money is going to come from, rather than putting this burden on the citizens of Tillamook County.
When you start talking about the management of projects and cost overruns, there are only about four ways that we get money to cover these kinds of things. You either earn it through increasing fees, like if you're doing a water district or something like that. We had to increase our water bills in Wheeler to pay for our regional water system. You can ask the feds for it. You can ask the state for it. What I have found as the mayor is harder and harder every year. I think the, and I agree with that, the last thing we want to do is ask taxpayers to pay for it. So, I believe advocating for increased funding from other sources and then looking at the line item budget and seeing where we might get money from to also pad the costs.
Thank you.
I also don't have any bright ideas of where this extra money is going to come from, other than staying on top of costs to make sure that we stay within what we're already committed to and doing what we can to find the money somewhere. Unfortunately, just because you don't make the decision doesn't mean you have to clean up the mess. I clean up my kitchen every day, and I don't make that mess.[1379.20][1379.20][laughter] But you deal with the hands that you're dealt. And so, we'll just pull together, and we'll dig deep, and we'll find it without burdening the taxpayers anymore.
Okay. And there's a lot of misinformation out there about the Southern Flow Corridor. First of all, the bids have come in, and come in close to what we thought it would be originally. It's not $2 million over budget. It's pretty close to right-on budget. Second of all, we do have some soft donors lined up in case it does go over budget. So, let's cut to chase here, because this is a really good project for this community. It's going to lower the flood levels in our community. It's also going to provide a rich salmon habitat for future generations to fish in our community. I, you know, as a CPA, I've looked at this. I've studied it all. I don't think we're going to have a problem with it. We do have some aces in the hole. Like I said, we have some soft money that we could probably go to the donors for. We also have some timber properties that we could sell if we needed to, if we got into a bind. But I don't see it happening. The bids came in close to what we wanted. We'll stay on top of it. We have a staff that is better than anybody I've ever seen for holding costs down and fulfilling the contract needs. So, and there are no concerns on my part on the Southern Flow Corridor.
Thank you. Commissioner Bartline? So, now, we're moving into a much easier topic, roads.[1470.40][1470.40][laughter] We've had, and this is just an editorial comment, this is not on the cards, but we've had a heck of a year, and our roads have taken a hit. And so, this question is regarding a specific road, but you can see it probably has application in many other places. What else can the county do to work toward the reopening of Cape Mir's Loop?
I think, am I starting the beginning?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Cape Mir's Loop Road is critical infrastructure for several reasons. One, it's a tourist attraction, but more importantly, it is the accessibility in and out of a couple of our communities. And it is critical that we find a way to fix that road. My understanding is that the county is pursuing a tiger grant, and we are hopeful that that will be a source of funding to repair that road. Roads in general are a priority. Quality infrastructure is the bedrock, no pun intended, of our economic development. We need to be able to move people and products safely and effectively throughout this county. And as we saw in December, serious road failures isolate our communities, but they also significantly impact our businesses and our quality of life.
Thank you.
The Cape Mir's Loop Road issue is a very serious issue. This past December, I think you'll remember that Oceanside and Cape Mir's at different times were totally isolated. And that's an unacceptable situation for any county. LeAnn Welsh of Public Works is out looking for a tiger grant. She has asked for letters of support. Letters of support are coming from the Economic Development Council and Tourism Council. As chair of the Tillamook County Futures Council, we are also writing a letter of support for this tiger grant. This road really does need to be repaired, and we need to find ways to keep those roads open at all times. It's just unconscionable that small communities on the Oregon coast are totally isolated for days at a time. And it's just something that we can't let continue to happen. Thank you.
I've been advocating for the Cape Mir's Loop Road reopening for several years now. And in December, when the floods came, we were up in Wheeler completely cut off, just like the Cape Mir's community, Oceanside, and Metart. So, every year, the Board of Commissioners holds a meeting, and they ask everybody, what should we recommend to the feds to be our top priority? And Wheeler went in with a proposal to fund our stormwater drainage, because we had three feet of water during the floods going downtown. After I heard the presentations, I asked that the commissioners remove the Wheeler project and keep Cape Mir's at the top of the list, because despite the fact we need it, you cannot cut off access roads that provide medical care, essential services from anybody in the county. And so, Wheeler was glad to step off.
From my understanding, the process is already moving forward. I think our commissioners have been on top of this and are doing well, moving it forward. Mr. Lapphart is pretty confident we're actually going to get this under his grasp. And I know that they've been fighting hard. And so, other than just continuing to support them and give them our backing, making sure that they're staying on top of it, they're getting it done, because we can't. First responders have to be able to get where they need to be. Our citizens need to be able to get to their homes and to essential services. And so, that absolutely has to remain a top priority.
Okay. The Cape Mir's Road is going to be a realignment, be brought back up into the woods and on some solid ground so that it quits moving. It's going to be about a $12 million project, all told. So far, the county has got grants for $6 million. We are out asking for the tiger grant, and Commissioner Lapphart has been working hard on that. And it sounds like we have a pretty good opportunity to get that grant. What we're finding on our other roads is that they're old. You know, when they were designed, they were designed for lighter vehicles, a pickup truck with four milk cans on it. Well, now, we're running big tanker trucks, and they're tearing them apart. So, when we fix a road now, it's really expensive to fix it and have it hold up under time. So, it's a whole new ballgame now, different from what it used to be. This road up over the top there, Cape Mir's, needs to be done. It needs to be done as rapidly as possible so that we can have the people moving back and forth. We do have quick fixes. We have some alternate routes that we can use and open up in the case of a flood. We have some alternate routes that we can use and open up in the case of a flood.
I would say also the Cape Mir's realignment, and I believe in the realignment, I think it has to be done. I know there's been a lot of discussion, making sure it avoids the watershed, working with the timber owners, working with the private property owners. We not only have our Cape Mir's, Oceanside, but we've got the rock pit up there, the lighthouse pit. And those trucks, I've been talking to people in the Nettard's, Oceanside area, and they have a feeling that those heavy truck, that heavy truck traffic on 131 might be partially the problem for those old roads. But it's something that needs to be done. One thing in the engineering report on the realignment, and I'm very, I was very encouraged to see it, is that they're discussing the drainage. They said maybe we'd have to add some more, create a larger easement. I say go for the larger easement, because drainage, as we found out, is very, very important.
So this question's very specific in how they'd like you to answer. Not the actual outcome, but how, in 10 words or less.
Hey, I'm a commissioner, we don't do that.
What are the top three issues facing Tillamook County that you will work to address?
Word number one would be budget deficit. I mean, that's very important that that gets taken care of. Transit lodging. The transit lodging tax issue is one that needs more work, I feel. Probably the biggest issue is honoring our seniors today. We need to make sure that our seniors are well taken care of. It's proven that if seniors were able to stay at home, they're healthier and happier. More than 10 words, but I think I got my answer.
Okay, I'm going to try and be good. Water, 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 roads, public safety, and first responders, because they do way too much and we rely too much on volunteers to do really tough jobs. I know more than Tim, I cheat, so does he.
Affordable housing, living wage jobs, fiscal responsibility, et cetera.
Budget, housing, community health.
Five. I said it. Infrastructure, economic development, and governance, and I think of those as roads, jobs, and regulations.
Supporting business and entrepreneurs, the availability of housing, workforce training, and community vitality.
Now, if they answered all questions like that, we could do like 50 questions. Okay, so, sorry, I was listening, I got turned around. So while this is geared towards position number two, I would welcome position number one to answer this question as well. Commissioner Labhart has really been the public relations, excuse me, Commissioner Labhart has really been the public relations, like a public information officer for the Board of Commissioners. What makes you qualified to fill that void? I think we're starting with Mayor Bartline.
Yes, we're off the 10-word limit, correct? That's big shoes to fill, but I will say that Mark's retirement is part of what motivated me to run. And I guess what I can promise you is I'm a girl who shows up. I show up at meetings, I show up where people have concerns that they want us to ask about. I work on Indian reservations all over the country and I spend my time flying into places like Lactaflambeau, Wisconsin. So what I will do, and you're right, Mark is the public face for us, and that's something I've done for my career, and I think I would be really proud to be the person who steps up to show up. Ha ha, shouldn't have to hold the part.
Well, I'm not looking to fill Mr. Labhart's position. I do believe that communication is a huge key to this position, less telling people what to do and more listening and sharing and being there. And should I be elected commissioner, then I also will join in in being that public face and talking with the people and representing us.
I have to admit, Commissioner Labhart is one of a kind. When I became a commissioner, I tried to keep up with him on a daily basis. And it can't be done. I mean, you've heard the boards I sit on, everything I do, I'm going from eight in the morning till eight at night, and I could not keep up with Commissioner Labhart. He has been the voice of this community and we are going to miss him dearly. I hope that in the future I'll be able to step into some of that role, especially when it comes to lobbying the state legislature and working on the statewide level. I've grown into this position. When I first started out, I was a severe introvert. And here I am now, I'm here able to talk. In fact, my daughter told me, Bartline, Dad, how in the heck did you ever get elected county commissioner? You're an introvert. Well, you grow into it and you learn and you develop. And yes, there's going to be a hole to fill, but I've stepped up before and I know Commissioner Josie has been in the state legislature and he will step up. So the new commissioner, hopefully, will have time to get their feet on the ground and see what happens in county level.
I suppose it helps that I've been doing radio for a number of years now and as the voice of Tillamook today, I've been able to visit with local and state politicians, with healthcare administrators, with people in our school, with our school administrators and our educators, with law enforcement. And being able to listen and to hear what people are saying, I think is very important. But I do think, as you said, communication, carrying the message, letting our citizens know what's going on is critically important to me.
My background is in marketing and communications. Commissioner Labhart absolutely is going to leave a void, but this is an area that I feel that I am strongly qualified in. I have experience representing Tillamook County. I have experience advocating for the interests of rural and coastal communities on regional and statewide issues. I'm also trained within the incident command system and currently, most of the work that I've done within the incident command system is as public information officer and a liaison officer in the area of emergency preparedness and emergency response. So with my background in marketing and communications, I actually think I would serve the county well.
I agree with everyone here. Commissioner Labhart, everyone I talk to, Commissioner Labhart is the hardest working person that I know. Very, very big shoes to fill. Wherever you go, in Tillamook County or in Salem or actually throughout Oregon, you see Commissioner Labhart involved in so many things on a regular basis. His connections at the legislature in Salem and throughout, so it's going to be extremely difficult to walk in the footsteps of Commissioner Labhart. But at the same time, in my work with the Ocean Policy Advisory Council and Territorial Sea Plan Advisory Committee, things of that nature, I've dealt with legislatures in Salem in dealing with these very, very tough ocean policy issues. Those are the types of connections that you need to really fill the shoes of Mark Labhart. Mark really does spend a lot of time in Salem, but for a very good reason. He is extremely effective in the capital. And I'm hoping that I can do the same thing. I've got a lot of connections there and it would be an honor to serve in that capacity.
All right. So now, we're back to Ms. Williams. What will you do to enable and encourage curbside recycling throughout Tillamook County?
Well, this has been on my wish list since I got here. You know, it comes back to collaboration and working together, finding out what it's going to take. So working with our waste management and finding out what is it that we need and then finding a way to make that happen. Because, you know, strictly, oh, well, let's just, you know, fund it from the county, probably isn't the right answer. It's here. It's here in this room. That's where the answer is. And so we need to just go find it and do it.
This must be a David McCall question. Curbside recycling, you know, I would support the curbside recycling, but the problem we have is that it increases the fees for collecting garbage to do that. And most of our communities really don't want to pay more for the collecting of garbage. I just don't see it being effective in Tillamook County at the current time. Eventually, hopefully, we'll be able to find a way to do that. But right now, like I said, we would be shooting ourselves in the foot if we required it, because people just would not, would not pay for it. They just can't afford it in Tillamook. We're one of the poorer counties in the state of Oregon and they just can't pay that extra money to do that. In the future, maybe. Maybe there'll be some ways. Maybe the county could make it mandatory for the whole county. But, you know, that's not probably in the best interest of everybody in the county. So I support it, but we can't afford it.
I think that probably when you talk--
Ms. Mayor Peterson, can you do me a favor? Even though your voice probably is making it to the back, can you move the microphone just a little bit closer? Folks in the very back of the room are having a little bit of trouble here.
I apologize. There you go. Thank you.
Is that better?
We talked about it in Bay City. We have a franchise with our sanitary. And I have to agree with Commissioner Bartline. I think the only thing that's going to happen is, one of the things that Mr. Redding talked to our council about was, they don't get anything for these recycled materials. Their cost is so small, say for milk jugs, that you have to take them over the hill and there isn't the value there. When we find more value in the recycled materials, then I think we can, so you don't have to charge someone. They can have their recycling, have a red one and a green one and a whatever one. But until we can find more value for those recycled materials, I don't see it happening right away if it's in somebody's pocketbook that it happens.
Right. As the former David McCall. Took us four years to switch those hats. I agree with actually a lot of what's been said. The value of the recycling commodities is too volatile. Public perception is that there's a value associated with recyclables that should pay for the services of collecting and recycling those products, and that just simply isn't the case. There may have been a time when that was the case, it is not any longer. Mandating the service countywide is probably the only way to spread the cost across the residents of the county in such a way that it would be considered affordable. But I'm not sure that that's the will of the people. And so you have to balance the needs of people who want to have curbside recycling with the costs associated so that it's not a burden for those who can't afford it.
I would agree with almost everything that's been said here. It boils down to an economic issue. I don't believe the county can just mandate curbside cycling without figuring out how it's going to pay for itself. I think we really need to change the focus to promoting, to make sure that people are recycling on a regular basis. We have places like Cardom and the transfer stations in Tillamook County. I'm there at least once a month, if not more. I've got bins that we collect all of our recyclables in and we go to the extent and we take them to the transfer station once a month. And we really all need to get into that habit. I think a bigger issue, rather than recycling, is possibly making sure that everyone does indeed have garbage service. I think, I see a lot of people out that are burning garbage and I'm just not sure that that is the best thing for Tillamook County. So even though recycling is a great idea and everyone should be doing it, I really feel that there are other more important issues with garbage in Tillamook County, but making sure that everyone has garbage service.
So when I think about solid waste management, and I am from Wheeler, Cardom up in Wheeler, like Dave referred to, is a pretty amazing system, but a lot of people don't remember where we started. Where we started was with a community that recognized we couldn't afford big fees. Our county is covered by family-owned haulers and garbage service folks. We don't have waste management that can absorb this kind of stuff into a huge budget. We have family businesses trying to provide a service. But what we learned at Cardom was, and I think Dave's right, if you educate a community well, they will step up, especially us in Tillamook County, and learn how to do the right thing. When the market fell out and we had to stop picking up certain things, it became more difficult to move to curbside stuff. So I agree, we need to do more just to get us recycling and then look at how to find more convenient recycling.
So Commissioner Bartline, we'll start with you. This question asks for a number as your response. If the core difference between a successful or unsuccessful commissioner is simple empathy and the ability to identify with others in the public and private sector when mutually sustaining Tillamook County, how would you rate your empathy identity on a scale of one to 10?
Please so seriously, could you read that one?
I seriously could.
I gotta make sure I got it right.
If the core difference between a successful--
I'm sorry.
Okay. If the core difference between a successful or unsuccessful commissioner is simple empathy and the ability to identify with others in the public and private sector when mutually sustaining Tillamook County, how would you rate your empathy identity on a scale of one to 10? We're going to have to put some parameters around one and 10. One being absolutely unempathetic and 10 being you can't even distinguish yourself between the people in the audience.
And the only answer is a number?
Is one through 10, where you see yourself on that scale. That's all I can give you, that's all I know.
I would see myself at about an eight.
Okay.
I stole my number. I'm going to use eight also, because the commissioners know a little bit more and I listen to both sides and I really want to do what the people want all the time, what you can, but you can still empathize with them. So I'm going to stick with an eight.
I think eight is a popular number. I'll say eight and a half. Because we're talking about the balance between public and private entities, I think I have a unique perspective. As a former small business owner, I understand the unique challenges of operating a small business every day and what that takes. And I understand the implications of public policy and regulations. And so being able to balance the two is something that I bring to the position.
Now, I think we're all looking at very popular numbers here. When you work on as many different committees and organizations that I deal with, empathy, you have to be able to listen to people. Your ideas are very important, but you can't just have your own ideas walking into a committee or meeting. You've really got to make sure that you understand everyone's position. And it's not easy to do at times, but as a commissioner, it's something that you absolutely have to do. So I also would have to give myself an eight.
Well, gee, I think I'm just going to break the norm. Go figure. I'm an old counselor. I've worked in prisons with guys serving terms for murder and I've worked in middle schools and peeled seventh graders off the wall. So I'm going to give myself a nine. I know the difference between me and the audience, but understanding where people come from, what they need, how to have compassion for them, that's something I went to university for and spent my entire career working on, from kids to, and sometimes as the mayor, I feel a little bit like a referee. And you learn how to build empathy. So I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to give myself a nine on that one.
Well, I have to say, an eight and still growing, as my business is retail, I depend on one-on-one connections with people in order to make my money. So I thrive on understanding people and getting to know them.
Those were the longest numbers I've ever--
Yeah. I've only did so much.
They still give you a minute, Bill, so.
You get a minute to say the number.
So Mayor Peterson, you're next. So Mayor Peterson, you're next. This is from the parent of a child experiencing a disability. There are currently no after-school or summer programs that support these children beyond elementary school. This is very limiting for parents without significant family support to work full-time. How do you think this could be addressed?
Again, I think there's some community programs. We have great ones in then, but I think that it needs to be addressed at the school level. Now, what I'm hearing is my child at school. I know City of, pardon me, Tillamook School District has before and after programs. Mixing, but I've also heard there are sometimes difficulty. Isn't the best environment? When, when I have a child with special needs, is he getting everything that he should be getting at school district, at the school level? I can't say that for sure. I, I do believe that it needs to be handled at the school and I would have to ask the educators how they feel about it.
It sounds to me like the, the void in program availability is both in a before-and-after-school setting, but also through summer programs. And, and the school system is not going to be a sufficient answer to that problem. I work very closely with the schools. I've been very actively involved with, with the school system as my children have grown up through Garibaldi Grade School and Nea County Middle School and High School. And, and this is not an area that I have a significant amount of familiarity with, but I absolutely can empathize with the needs of working families to have programs available to their, for their children. And with families that are uniquely struggling with, with special needs, those services can become even more critical. And so, looking at partnerships would be my response to that question, but I would want to talk with families who find themselves in this situation to better understand what would meet their needs.
I would agree with Jennifer. What we have are schools that are strapped budget-wise. I think we need to go look outside the box and look for funding availability from state or federal agencies. And in downtown Tillamook County, we were very successful in building the Peter Big Child Care Center, which I feel is very important. We also need to make sure that our children are very active in extracurricular activities that are offered after school. You can't force a child to do things like that, but I think you'll find that the children that are most successful in school really do dedicate themselves to, to their schoolwork, but they're also very, very active in extracurricular activities. And I think that that just makes for a well-rounded personality.
This is an interesting question for me because when I got here tonight, I rearranged the whole table because I'm 60% deaf. And so when you talk to me about disabilities, I want to know what kind? How old? What are the difficulties? How is it manifesting? Because as a kid who was deaf with the last name Stevens, all my report cards said I didn't seem interested in learning, that I would daydream. Well, the teacher would turn their back and write on the chalkboard, 60% of my hearing today is reading lips. So, never stand across the room and don't think I know what you're talking about. But being excluded socially and academically as the result of a disability is something that just should not be happening 60 years after I went through grade school. And when we talk about our community, right now, we're having a struggle up north because they want to close our swimming program, which is an incredibly important program for kids with, well, they may not close it, but they're changing it. Sorry.
I think the solution is in assessing the needs of our families that we have, finding more information about their ages and their disabilities and the services that they are needing. Is it just someone to kind of keep an eye on them or are they needing actively engaged participation? And then the solution is going to be in community involvement and collaborating and partnerships. We have an amazing community and great people and we have some fantastic services. It's just bringing all those people together to meet the needs that are of our families.
That's a tough question. It tears everybody's heartstrings because how do, how do you move forward when you don't have the funds? I sit on the YMCA board and we do provide after-school programs and summer programs, but they're really not geared for children with disabilities. I sit on Northwest Seniors and Disability Services Board and I'm just beginning to wonder if there's a partnership that could be arranged between the Y and Northwest Seniors, which we could explore. We have a social directors network in this community that is second to none. They meet once a month in a room and there's probably 20 of the directors there. I might just throw this up out and see what they say because it is a major issue and it should be addressed. Like the money and the funding isn't there, but maybe we can figure a way to partner with each other to make it happen.
So as I said, I'm going to do a quick check-in. As you can imagine, we have a lot of questions left. Are we interested in continuing?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Let's do it. Run them to the ground.
It looks like the most uninspired, mm-hmm.
Would we consider a quick break, a 5-minute break or something?
Just know that cuts into your questions. But would you guys like a quick break? You know, you are free, everybody is free to get up and move around. I would actually encourage that and I think we'll just plug through if folks are all right with that. No more questions though. We won't be accepting any more questions up front because we're already not going to get through all of these. So, the next question starts with Ms. Purcell. Some people say the CPACs lost their P because the county commissioners felt they had too much power. Do you agree with that or would you give their, or would you give them back their Ps? And you, so for the audience, you may not know what Ps stand for, so that sounds like an odd question. But that's how it's written.
So, the community planning advisory committees, which are now community advisory committees, I think are a really valuable tool that our unincorporated communities have in terms of having a voice around land use and planning issues. And I ironically think that by taking away the P, as the question is worded, has maybe increased the breadth of their activities. And, and I would like to look, look actually at communities who don't have community advisory committees. Maybe they weren't interested in forming CPACs originally and revisiting whether those communities, such as the unincorporated parts of North County, would be interested in having a community advisory committee now that the, that infrastructure is more, more developed.
So, I was a board member and I still am a board member of the Civic City Woods Community Advisory Committee. And we did not lose any teeth. We actually gained a lot of, of ability to go out and talk about other things. One of, one of the very serious issues that the commissioners had was that the CPACs, as they were back then, were actually talking about things other than land use issues. And at first, they had a major issue with that. But once they brought all the CPAC chairs in and we had a discussion with the board of county commissioners, they actually realized that what we're doing, not only in land use planning, but in taking up all the other issues that are important to the community, they found real value in that. So I would take, I don't think we lost any teeth at all. I think we gained a lot of ability to go out and discuss things. If we discuss things not land use related, we cannot go out and use the county name when we discuss those issues. But as a community, we certainly can.
I love it when we start a question with rearranging acronyms. I am a real believer in community advisory committees, whether they're in the unincorporated area, blah, blah, blah. It's getting like unincorporated areas. Or even like within Wheeler, I facilitate a citizens advisory committee on land use planning and we are responsible for rewriting and updating our comprehensive land use plan. I don't know of many more important issues than Tillamook County than thinking about how we're going to use the land we have. We are blessed to live in an incredible 77-mile-long county that's very diverse. I think that it was a brilliant idea, whether you take the P out or not, to make sure that we had a voice and key stakeholders at the table and participating in a transparent way, which is something I would really support and continue.
I would have to agree that I think the P is limiting and there is so much more that these community advisory groups have to offer and that expanding their scope is actually in the benefit of the community advisory.
So when I became a commissioner, we had basically outright war between the CPACs and our head planner, department head. It was nasty. I think those that sat through it would agree. And the commissioners did make a change. We've got a new director, a younger director now that's way more outgoing and way more in tune with what the communities need. And we did change from a CPAC to a community advisory committee. And there again, that's to get all of the input to the county commissioners. We are now in a position where I think we have a very good working relationship with the advisory committees. And our new planner has made tremendous strides in the planning department. I was getting 2 to 3 phone calls a week with complaints about permitting process. We don't get those anymore. He has turned the corner around and done a fantastic job.
Whether or not the P is in there, I think it's really important to remember there's only 7 cities. And when I, and I agree, Brian Cole, our new director, great guy, I've heard nothing but good about him. But I asked him a question about inclusionary zoning when it came to Bay City and he said it's really a city issue and I'm a county planner. I think that we need to remember that there's a lot of cities in this that are, in this county that are not incorporated cities. And so, I think, I think the planning is important, whether it is an advisory committee or a CPAC or C A, C A, pardon me, a CP, pardon me. Which one? C A C. There we go. I think planning is, is critical and whether or not it's called a CPAC is beside the point.
So now we'll start with Mr. Yamamoto. This is specifically asked that this be answered by all candidates. What is your position on federal funding for Planned Parenthood?
Very difficult question to answer, 1 minute. I'm going to break it down into 2 issues. I think, first and foremost, people are talking about abortion. Abortion is the law of the land in this country. It is the law of the land. It must be supported. Second issue, funding for Planned Parenthood. When you look at the overall funding concept for Planned Parenthood, you'll find that less than half of the money is provided by the federal government. Most of the money does come from private foundations, individuals, the Bill Gateses of the world. And then when you look further, well, first of all, it is a federal law. Federal funds cannot be used to fund abortions. That is a federal law. So when you look at all of this and the fact, when you look at all of the procedures provided by Planned Parenthood, and there are some great things that Planned Parenthood does, cervical and breast cancer and contraception, I mean, it goes above and beyond. When you actually look at the number of procedures that are provided by Planned Parenthood and the number of abortions, the number of abortions is 3% or less. I don't think there's any reason not to fund Planned Parenthood.
To begin with, I agree with David. I think the question is about abortion. And I'm going to be really honest, as somebody who's worked in public health most of my career, that's a decision that's between a woman and her doctor. And I am not well-versed enough in all the issues that women bring to their doctor's offices to weigh in on whether or not it's right or good. And like David said, it's the law. And frankly, I think it should be protected by HIPAA. Secondary to that though, Planned Parenthood is a, an organization devoted to prevention. It's devoted to preventing STDs. It's devoted to preventing HIV and AIDS. It's devoted to permitting, to preventing sexual promiscuity. Of course, I, I think we should fund it. It would, it saves us tremendous money in the long run to do prevention.
Because this is a nonpartisan position and this is a very partisan issue, I would prefer to focus my time and on county issues. And if you'd like to come up to me one-on-one and we'll have a discussion, I absolutely will answer your questions, but I prefer to focus on county needs right now.
So, and I have to tell you, I feel the same way. This is not a county issue. It's a nationwide issue. And having said that, I'm willing to tell you what my personal views are. I'm a Catholic. I admit to that. And I, my religious beliefs are that abortions probably should not be performed unless a mother's health is in danger. As far as Planned Parenthood, it's fine to fund them. I mean, I, you can't take, you can't legislate your own morality over people. That's, that's the individual decision. I don't feel that, even with my religious beliefs, that we should be sitting out and telling people what they need to do with their bodies, especially a woman. And that's between her and her doctor, whether she needs it done. And that's just me personally, you know? So it's kind of convoluted. Yeah, my religious belief is one thing, the reality is another. And I'm not sure what I would have told my daughter if she gotten pregnant in high school. I cannot honestly answer that question. So, that's wishy-washy, but me.
I actually agree. I don't see it as a county issue, but it is something that of concern to people. Should we have Planned Parenthood? I think it does great good. I truly do. I think educating our youth and, and it saves money in the long run. Since 1976, I believe that it's been against, federal funds cannot be used. I mean, it's in very unusual circumstances. So I don't know if that's a question, whether it be abortion or whether Planned Parenthood should be funded. Should it be? I believe that it should.
I agree with my colleagues that this is not a county issue. However, what is a county issue is the importance of access to healthcare and the services that I'm familiar with that Planned Parenthood provides around women's health and family planning. The access to those services is important. And for members of our communities that can't readily access healthcare on their own, I think Planned Parenthood serves that need in many of our communities. We don't have a Planned Parenthood clinic in Tillamook County. We have a robust healthcare system and, and clinic services available. As to the question of funding, I think funding Planned Parenthood and having access to, again, women's health and family planning services is important and should be funded.
And this will start with you, Mayor Burden. As a Tillamook, as a Tillamook County Commissioner, a hard-working relationship with the State Coastal Caucus is paramount at this time to negotiate coastal dredging of county ports and river mouths, now that the state has obtained a dredge, is signing agreements and soliciting general permits to dredge ASAP. What is your working relationship with elected officials, your coastal caucus experience, and your ability to, excuse me, and your ability to succeed with responsible county coastal dredging?
My soapbox. I'm from Wheeler. To begin with, I know our delegation very well. I've worked very closely with, with all of our elected officials, both at the state and the federal level. I'm very comfortable interacting with the Coastal Caucus because I, I believe in what they do, but I want, the topic of dredging is something that I think that, that we need to talk about because it influences way more than just our bays. Our, our estuaries can't drain, our fish can't spawn, our, our land floods. If we don't talk about how to keep all of that out of our natural cleaning water system, I think we're going to continue to see big problems. Dredging is an important issue and I'm really glad that it came up because I've been lobbying our legislators for about, oh, I don't know, since the 90s, since the last-- our legislators for about, oh, I don't know, since the '90s, since the last time we drained the bridge was the '70s? I'll shut up, Mayor.
I currently don't have a working relationship with anybody on the caucuses, but I thrive on developing relationships. And I, unfortunately for my mother, was born very, very stubborn. And so once I get a hold of something, you know, I'm going to just stick with it until the end. And whether they like me or not, they're going to hear from me, so.
So over the last three years, I've built up a pretty good working relationship with Betsy Johnson and Debbie Boone. I can call them anytime if I've got a question or a problem. Also, Arnie Roeblin, I can sit and talk with Arnie anytime, and same with David Alberg. So those relationships are there. And I know Senator Johnson has been working very hard on the dredging issue and working it up the coast. It's going to get here, but it may be a while before our term comes. It seems like south coast is the starting point, and then they're going to be moving forward up to Tillamook to hopefully do some dredging. And I think when you look at the dredging, it's not going to be as intense as we might hope. I would like to see the river mouths opened up and the lower rivers opened up. I doubt very much whether that will happen with this dredging. It'll be mostly at the bay, I would think.
Thank you. I too. I visit with Senator Johnson and Debbie monthly at least. But other people that I talk to, Leo Kuntz about dredging, and Ray Monroe with Soil and Water, talking to the people that are dealing with it on a regular basis as much as on the political side, I think is really important. And again, I rely on someone with the expertise of Leo Kuntz, the Salem dredging, and Ray Monroe with our Soil and Water, and I look to them for their expertise. Do I think the mouths of our rivers should be dredged? Absolutely, I do.
So this seems an appropriate place to insert a disclaimer that I'm here this evening as a private citizen, not as a public employee, and my responses reflect that. As a member of the regional solutions team, Senator Betsy Johnson is actually our convener. I work very closely with Senator Johnson, as well as Representative Boone. But we have a significant resource in our coastal caucus. For those of you who aren't familiar, the coastal caucus is made up of all of the state senators and representatives from the coastal communities. They advocate for coastal issues, and they're willing to set aside their geography for what is in the best interest of the coast. They worked tirelessly to advocate for the resources to acquire a dredge. The state-owned dredge then has to prioritize where will it begin? And the south coast ports were in critical need. So to answer the question, I have a very close working relationship with the coastal caucus, and the state dredge is a very valuable resource.
So also, for the past six or seven years now, I've had direct contact with the Oregon Coastal Caucus. I've been involved in ocean planning with the Territorial Sea Plan Advisory Committee. As a matter of fact, I'm a co-petitioner in an appeal to the Oregon Court of Appeals against Department of Land Conservation Development. Not about what happened, but the process. The state of Oregon did not follow their own process. When we filed our appeal in an amicus brief, we got all seven coastal counties to sign on with us in the amicus brief, in the court brief. And that is because we involve the coastal caucus all up and down the state. And all seven coastal counties to be involved in something like this, it's unheard of in the state of Oregon. It's never happened before. When it comes to responsible dredging, absolutely, something that needs to be done. We need to protect our waterways. We need to protect our fish. It's just the right thing to do.
So this next question is going to be an amalgamation of several. It's around the TLTs. All right? So this was the most popular question to ask, and everyone's question is just a little bit different. So I'm just going to, I think we'll give you a minute and a half. And what the intent of these questions is, is to, I think, to pull out some of your philosophies about the TLTs. So let's see. So it's going to be a multi-pointed question, okay? Multi-points question. So, "Do you think that the TLT taxes are currently distributed equitably? And along with that, how do you think projects should be prioritized with these funds?" And then to kind of just build on that a little bit more in that equity situation, "Do you think that South County gets the short end of the stick in the way TLT money's being distributed? And how would you change that?" And then there's a follow-up question to that whole thing, okay?
So, you can't answer that question without making everybody happy. I think the TLT is a fantastic resource for us, and we are still in the learning throes of how to process all of it and where to prioritize and how to get everything done. And as far as equitability and prioritization in South County in general, I think it comes back to communication and our overall goal. And not everybody is going to be happy with every decision. I know I'm not happy with every single decision that comes from the TLT. But as long as we have confidence that everybody's being heard, and that we're all headed with the same thought in mind, which is, of course, building up this community, this entire county as one community with several little parts, that we will get there, even though, again, I can't make everybody happy.
Okay. I've been right in the middle of the TLT from the beginning. And I've tried to make some changes because I didn't feel that maybe it was as equitable as it should be. But for South County right now, in reality, 30% of the tax comes from South County, and we're spending about 70% in this go-round, in infrastructures in South County. And so there shouldn't be a complaint because they're actually getting more than their share. How to prioritize? One of the things that I've really pushed for in our discussions of how to change the TLT and its distribution, I want to have community-led meetings in North County with the communities coming in and giving priorities for some really big projects in North County. The same thing with the outreach in Central County. What projects do we want for game changers? Do we want a performing arts center downtown? Do we want, what do we need in Tillamook County, in the central section? And the same thing in South County. What do the people in South County want? And use that learning session, that outreach to the people, to come up with a plan and prioritize what we're going to spend it on. Once we have that plan, then the county commissioners, with the help of another advisory committee, can say, okay, we're going to do South County this year, Central County next year, and North County the year after that. We're also working to prioritize expenditures at the fairgrounds. The fairgrounds has the potential of really being a great center for this community. I got beat. At this point, I was on a roll.
Distribution of the TLT, as Bill said, a third of it does come out of Pacific City. And when I visit with another group, the TIA, TIA is the Tourism Industries Association, they would prefer to see more money go into marketing. I don't completely agree with that because are we ready for all the tourists as yet? I think that we need facilities to accommodate them, but by the same token, the money has a specific direction. The 70% can only be used for tourism, tourism-related funds. Is it fair that the one that pays a third of it doesn't get a third of it back? They may not think it is, but I'm hoping that they will benefit from, say, people at the fairgrounds. If they improve the fairgrounds, doesn't the rising tide float all boats, as they say? Anyway, thank you.
I see the transient lodging tax as a huge opportunity for Tillamook County. I think one of the missed opportunities right now is the ability for those funds to leverage other funding opportunities. And I believe there should be a matching requirement as those funds are distributed. In terms of prioritizing those funds, I think it is critical that we invest in existing infrastructure because, as has been stated, we already have a significant tourist population, and much of our infrastructure is aching from the impacts of that. And I'm not just talking about roads. There's a portion that is already dedicated to roads, but as Commissioner Bartline mentioned, there's the fairgrounds down in South County, there's Cape Coanda and the access, and the services that are available at that beach access. We need to hear from members of the community what existing tourism facilities, tourism-related facilities, need investments and prioritize accordingly. And that can't always be geographic. We have to look at the county as a whole and prioritize our investments in the assets that we currently have and that currently need that assistance.
So I was on the original committee that developed the ballot issue to bring the issue of transient lodging taxes to the voters, and it passed overwhelmingly. And I think one of the reasons for that was that the commissioners promised that 30% of the transient lodging tax money was going to go to help maintain roads in Tillamook County. That is absolutely a good thing. I don't see a problem here. How do you find a problem with millions of dollars in found money for Tillamook County? Whenever you start talking money and large amounts of money like this, there's going to be people that are a little upset. We need cooler heads to prevail. Collaboration is the big thing. Commissioner Labarre talked about bringing meetings together to find out exactly what residents of North County, and Central County, and South County want. Well, as Chair of the Tillamook County Futures Council, we've now been tasked with putting those meetings together. And I think we're going to have a great time doing that. We want to know exactly what the residents of various parts of this county want. One of the issues is that within Tillamook County, all the cities in northern Tillamook County and central Tillamook County have had a transient lodging tax for quite some time, and they've been able to develop their tourism infrastructure. South County has not been able to do that. We are behind, and yet we have a tremendous number of tourists that come into South County. So I do feel that at least initially, in the first few years, we really do need to concentrate on South County to bring it up to speed so that we can adequately take care of our guests.
Tough question. And, you know, I really understand Jennifer's response about who she was answering as because I sit up here as a candidate for the Board of Commissioners, but I'm also a mayor. And the mayors worked really hard with the commissioners to create an intergovernmental agreement that assured that those funds that were dedicated to infrastructure and to marketing were distributed in an objective process. I work on federal and state grants all the time. Part of what the feds know is that no matter what it is, whatever you decide about how to spend that found money, people aren't going to like the decision you make because you can't please everybody all the time. So for us to not have an objective process by which to prioritize how our money's going to be spent, I think is a big mistake. I don't think it's wrong to go out and ask the communities. I think we need to. But when we prioritize bids for projects, we need to do that in an objective way that is transparent, that gives everybody a level playing field. And I think that if we don't hold on to anything else moving forward, we need to hold on to that because that's where equity comes from.
So we have eight questions. We're not going to get to all of them. I'll do my best, but it's all up to how you guys respond. So the next question is, I am going to reduce this question. This is the question. But that being said, the lead-up does help establish a little bit of context. Okay. "It's been stated that loggers, farmers, and fishermen are the backbone of Tillamook County. The Clean Water Act's stewardship responsibilities to restore the waters and maintain their integrity, and to maintain the integrity of the nation's waters, were given to the state by Congress. The states have failed. Don't you think that Salmanis must be viewed as a resource to be protected and enhanced, equal in importance to all others? What will you do?"
Can you read that last sentence again?
No. "Don't you think the Salmanis must be viewed as a resource to be..."
Salmanis.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
Where'd that word?
They're Salmanis. Salmanis. I'm just, it's salmon. Salmanis. Okay, we're going to use a technical term here. "What will you do to protect the salmon habitat and fishermen?" I think Commissioner Bartline? Ms. Williams is like, mm.
First of all, we have to rely on science as to what we're doing. Right now, on the Trask River, the Department of Forestry is doing a paired watershed study where they're studying how the logging affects upper-level streams. And this includes BLM land, which for logging, state forestry land that's being logged, and commercial logging. Well, you go up there, the BLM land has barely been touched. I mean, they'll take a few trees out. State lands have a little more trees left on the landscape, but it's still been logged. You get to the commercial side, and it's clear cuts right down to the ground. The study has shown that within 200 feet of one of those clear cuts, the water temperature and salmonella, food for the salmon, are the same as before it started. In the state forest lands, it's the same almost immediately, and the federal are not taking any logs, so it's the same right off the get-go. So we need to look at the science as to what we're doing. We can't restrict our natural resources. Farmers have been putting up these maneuver tanks and working with digesters. This community takes our natural resources very seriously. We do a lot to protect them. I don't see a great need to go beyond where we are at this point."
Bill, I have to agree. Conservation is huge in this county and in the entire state. I believe with our fisheries, our health is better than it was. And we look at the cove, so much healthier than it was. When it comes to Bay City, it's an expensive process. Just in Bay City, along Patterson Creek, and we have nine culverts that need to be replaced. That is going to be a $3 million project. So when you look at just that area, is it necessary? Are we working on it? Yes, we are. Is it truly necessary for salmon habitat? Yeah, because they get to Ninth Street and they have to take the Jacoby now. They cannot continue up that creek. We need to do something about it. But the cost, and again, relying on science, and I actually like more setbacks, even though I'm going to do without.
So my earlier disclaimer still applies. I agree with my colleagues that our farmers, our fishermen, our foresters, our good stewards of our environment, they will all agree with you that clean water is a high priority. Both the availability of water and the quality of our water is a high priority. But what we do need to be doing is acknowledging the beneficial uses of our waterways. We need to be protecting our drinking water sources. We need to be ensuring that quality habitat is not impacted by those activities. And we need to be working together to do that. We have great partnerships already in this county. Public Works working closely with Tillamook Estuaries Partnership and other groups in our community to ensure that when culverts are replaced, they're meeting both the needs of our infrastructure as well as fish passage.
Thank you. Tillamook County was born on a natural resource-based economy of timber, dairy, and fishing. I like to put this in historic perspective. Look back 50 years ago, and look at what timber and fishing and the dairy industries were doing. Switch to today, things are so much different than they were. Look 50 years in advance. What do we want to see 50 years from now in the timber, the dairy, and the fishing industry? industries? When we say we have endangered species, we do. We have an endangered coho species. And yet, for the past three years, on both the Nostocka and the Haylam, ODFW has been allowing take, keeping of coho salmon because there are so many in our streams. We need to continue to improve, absolutely. But I don't think we're in as bad a place today as many people think we are or want to think we are. I think we have some improvements to make. I think we're in a good place right now.
Chewing on how I really want to answer this, because if I was on my mayor's obots, I'd go back and start talking about dredging again because that is one of the links between all these things. I think that we have to have a balanced approach. Wheeler lost its salmon run years and years ago because we decided that we would rather bury our streams and put them through culverts, which is what flooded our city, than to allow the natural... There used to be gill netters on Gervais Creek in Wheeler. We used to have an actual commercial salmon run in Wheeler. We've lost a lot of that. So what do we do? And my dad was a forester, and my grandpa was a logger, and my dad worked for the Forest Service. We need to protect our habitats. We need to protect fisheries. They are an integral part of both our history and our economy. How we do that, I think, is coming to the table together and actually working together. And I think our commissioners have tried to do that so that we make decisions we can all live with and stop putting one side's needs above the other. We need to protect it all.
I know, I'm going to... She's not good at this.
I'm going to have to agree with my colleagues. I think for the most part, the people here are very conservation-minded and very want to protect both. They want to protect our natural resources as well as our industries. And if there are specific issues that aren't being addressed in a certain area or on a certain creek or a certain river, absolutely, those can be brought to the table because it may be a matter of just not having the correct information. And again, it comes back to collaborating and working together because I think we have really great people here. And so it's... We can find these solutions, absolutely.
So let's see if we can squeeze in two more questions and the final wrap-up for you guys. And this is... Well, actually, three if you count this one. This is a single-word, and you don't... You know, your people talk a lot, I don't know. And again, this is one of those questions where it's entirely up to you whether or not you, as they all are, whether or not you'd like to answer this. Although this race is nonpartisan, what political party are you affiliated with?
Oh, gee.
Okay, folks, everybody has a right to ask the questions that are important to them. It's you, Mike.
Democrats. Unaffiliated and independent.
I take the fifth.
Repeatedly elected Democrat.
I decline to answer.
And this is nonpartisan, so I'm going to decline to answer just on principle.
That's fair. So now we've got two big questions, and you have one minute for each one. Good luck. So this is... There are a couple of questions on this. This might be the more succinct one to kind of pull it together for you. What is your plan for the conflict between the flooding on farmland north of the Wilson and environmental activities that seem to increase flooding?
My approach to conflict is one of collaboration. And my work currently as a member of the Regional Solutions Team sits squarely where missions collide, where the economy and the environment tend to be at odds. And I believe one of my colleagues said this earlier. I don't believe that those two are mutually exclusive. I believe strongly that through compromise and collaboration, we can meet the needs of both our economy and our environment.
So it seems we're talking about environmentalism and flooding of farmland and roads. I agree with Jennifer. They're not mutually exclusive. Everything we do in Tillamook County has an effect on everything else. And I think if we're talking about not being able to dredge or increase our channel flows, I think that's a mistake because you are keeping your salmon populations from being able to get outstream. And at the same time, by not being allowed to dredge and to clear channels, you're keeping the fish and you're flooding the roadways and flooding the farmland. I think it's a problem. And I agree with Jennifer again. Collaboration is the most important thing that you can do. You need to talk to each other. You can't talk past each other. You have to talk to each other. And I think you definitely can find solutions if you do this.
I believe that there is a way for us to balance both of the priorities of our county, both to be good stewards of our land and our natural resources and to support our agriculture and dairy communities. Because let's face it, those are some of our big economic drivers. So what I really respect is this is a hard topic to talk about. So what our commissioners and what Mark Labhart worked really hard to do was to create a piece of legislation, Senate Bill 1517, which takes this decision from the state and brings it down to us in the county and requires that we mediate the decisions between all parties. Now, I don't know what the intent of the law was, but I see it as an incredible opportunity to bring everybody to the table to make decisions together.
I'm getting better.
I'm going to have to agree with my esteemed colleagues that collaboration and compromise are the way to solve any issues that come before us. And will everybody walk away perfectly happy? Probably not. But the solution is there, the better solution for the whole county, for the individuals. It is there. But we have to be willing to work together. And sometimes that means taking a deep breath and actually listening to the person across the table and trying to be that empathetic and understand, even when you really don't want to. But that it's there. We can do this.
So I'm assuming this was probably in regards to the Nature Conservancy when they bought the Doerr property. I'm assuming that because when Nature Conservancy went in and did the work on there, several farmlands got flooded. So that posed a problem, and there's no planning or zoning way of valuing the other farmland so that farmland would have as much value as other land. So you take your good farmland and you try to protect it. So Commissioner Labhart did go to the state legislature. He worked with the Farm Bureau. They wanted a bill that would cover the entire state. We got a test project in Tillamook. We are working on planning and zoning now and come up with the new rules and regulations on that. I think we have a $50,000 grant to get it started with. Hopefully, we'll be able to come up with a solution so that we can limit the impact of when Nature Conservancy comes in, that they do listen to the local people, they just don't shove it down our throats. That's the problem. They get shoved down our throats without us having any say. This at least gets us to the table where we can work together. I guess that's all I have to say on that one.
And thank you then. About the Senate bill, I applaud the work Betsy Johnson, Mark Labhart, but more than that, Chad Allen, it's a project, a local dairy farmer, he's been working on it for over 10 years. It's not just a problem on the surface. It's wherever they enhance wetland. If it were your own home, you would know you can't send any of your water to the neighbor. But in this instance, they could dramatically change that farmland. So what they're saying is that if it dramatically changed the farmland alongside, shouldn't there accept some liability for that? I believe that they should. And with that, I think that I appreciate our Farm Bureau and, of course, Commissioner Labhart and our state senator.
Okay. So one more question, and because you can see there's these number of questions that haven't been asked, I do not want to have the blame for that. So Chris, would you pick a card?
Sure, give me the blame.
He knives now, throws a fist.
Oh, that's fine.
We don't want that.
Okay.
If they're on the floor, they're out.
Nope, she picked the yellow card. You saw it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Your final question is, what do you feel the commissioner's role should be concerning development?
So development can be taken in a lot of different ways. Economic development, I think the commissioners need a very strong voice in economic development. Our Economic Development Council, and I'm a member of the Small Business Advisory Council, really does need to take the reins and develop small industry, light business in Tillamook County. When you look across Tillamook County, you'll see that we have a lack of commercial and industrial properties. The vast majority of that land is at the Port of Tillamook Bank. And I think that's where we really need to move. If they're talking about development in terms of residential development, community development, I think, has a pretty strong handle on what they're doing. And I agree with previous comments. Ryan Poehl has come into this county, and he has completely turned around our community development department. There used to be backlogs, people had to wait for permits for 90 days or more. Now that just doesn't happen anymore. And I think he has a clear focus on what needs to be done as well as community development and residential business use.
I kind of like this question because we can interpret it kind of how we want. But development's a big word. And we could talk about economic development. My hunch is we're talking about comprehensive land use and what kind of role that the commissioners should play in that. And I'm an advocate, even though it is painfully hard sometimes, that A, we need a vision that all of our communities have a chance to weigh in on, and then we need to look at the comprehensive land use plan in Tillamook County, which, as I understand, has not been updated in quite a long time. When you do that, you hit all of the kinds of development that we're talking about because when you have a good idea of how you want to manage your land and your development, economic development follows when we have a balanced approach and a good plan in place.
I'm getting better at this.
You were actually there. I was a little slow. No, 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 I was slow hitting the button, so that's why it went off. You actually finished before I did.
I think the commissioner's role in development is helping to set the overall vision for where it is that we want to go. And that is set by listening to the community members and us deciding together. And then stepping in and making sure all the moving parts are in place and everybody has the opportunities and the connections and the resources they need to be able to move forward. Reviewing our comprehensive plan is one of those that has to be taken care of. And it's the commissioner's role to facilitate making that vision happen.
So economic development, in Tillamook County right now, we have a housing crisis. We have a total housing crisis causing us some concern on economic development. We did a community vitality study here three years ago with Aaron Scar, Melissa Carlson. And I started in on out. We brought community leaders in. We did a listening throughout the community. We heard from the Creamery. They can't fill their spots because there's no place for people to live. We heard from the hospital, same thing. We've heard from a number of businesses that the jobs are there, but there's no place for people to live in Tillamook. So we put together a housing task force, and we're listening more to the community. This task force has received $100,000 in funding now from the community partners and from the Fred Meyer Foundation. We are moving forward to see how we can start developing some more housing in Tillamook. They may be tiny houses, they may be apartment complexes, they may be looking at our planning and zoning, and we're going to be looking at the system development charges. These seem to be the reasons we can't get any new housing development.
Thank you, Bill. I agree. If we're looking at economic development, I think we're talking about housing because I hear that constantly. People come to me all the time. We're certainly raising lots of money with our TLT because of our transient lodging tax, but we need to have homes for our people too. As I mentioned earlier, when I first spoke, the tiny houses, there's ways that we can do it, that we can figure out affordable housing. We now have available in Oregon that we didn't have before, the ability to have inclusionary zoning. So there's things out there that we can... I prefer the voluntary over the mandatory, but I think we need to get a handle on housing, and we need to do it sooner rather than later.
When I hear the term development, I actually think of three things. I think of economic development, community development, and growth and development. And I think the role of the commissioner is a little bit different in each. When it comes to economic development, I agree with some of my colleagues up here. But in addition, the commissioners have a role in ensuring that we have a business-friendly operating environment, that we have business-friendly policies and regulations in place. Around community development, I think our county commissioners have a really important role to play in terms of fostering an environment where citizens feel engaged and heard. In terms of growth and development, we have... I think that commissioners have a responsibility to listen to our appointed planning commissions. I think we have a responsibility to listen to staff recommendations. And overall, in terms of a strategic plan, we have a strategic vision for Tillamook County, but it was established in 1997. And the voices of our citizens have changed since then, and it's time that we update that.
So your last question is probably one of the biggest ones that folks are going to want to hear from you. And you have one minute to wrap up and tell us why you're the best candidate for the job.
Who's first?
Mayor Burden.
Oh, why am I the best candidate? Okay. I'm a local girl, come back paying for a raising. I have been part of Tillamook County forever. I actually just recently learned that my great-great uncle was one of the first county commissioners, and his first job was to help the road get around Nea Connie Mountain. So I feel like I am following in the steps of my family. I have 30 years of experience in relating to people, building partnerships, and managing budgets in a fiscally sound way. I am an old counselor and conflict resolver. I believe that there is a pathway to answers. We may not always get everything we want, but we can make decisions that we can all live with. And when you look at collaboration, it starts with no collaboration, coming to the table playing quietly by yourself, coming to the table and sharing your toys except for your red truck because it's your favorite. Coming to the table, putting all your toys in the middle and sharing, but real collaborations when you bring your money to the table and decide which toys to buy. And I think I know how to help us do that and facilitate that process.
When I moved to Tillamook County, I was so excited because I got to choose to live here. I fell in love with the coast. I fell in love with the people. And I come back time after time after time as a visitor. And finally, I was so excited when I got to move here because this is where I want to raise my children. This is where I want to have them raise their children. And I have a vested interest in seeing the overall progress of this county. And while I don't have as much experience as some of my colleagues because I've been home with small children, I have the energy and enthusiasm and the vision, and I can work with people. And that's what this is about. This is about the people. And that's why I will be a fantastic candidate for commission.
So I think I'll stand on my record. I am passionate about helping people in this community. You've seen it quite often, number one in the Year of Wellness, where I've been the cheerleader and the go-to guy. You've seen me hula-hooping even. Who could have believed that I would be hula-hooping, challenging people to hula-hoop? You've seen it in the housing, my strong leadership there and working for the community. You've seen it even in the homeless population, which I almost hate to say it, but I helped work to bring the shelter here to Tillamook, Helping Hands. I was involved in that. And it's good for the community. I think one of the biggest things, nicest questions I heard was at one of the meetings, and I was asked, what do you want your legacy to be? Well, when I look back, I want my legacy to be Mr. Bartline cared for the people. Well, when I look back, I want my legacy to be, Mr. Bartline cared for the people. Mr. Bartline was the People's Commissioner. And I've been told by a number of people that I am the People's Commissioner.
I suppose 20 years, almost 20 years on the Bay City Council, but helping people, being people's voice, making sure, even, even the years of, a dozen years of managing the family tax business, the years before that when I worked for the state of Oregon, I, I usually like to stay 10, 12 years in whatever job that I take. But it's always, if I didn't know the answer, I knew who to ask. And I think that's the important part, is I can get answers, and I will ask, and, and I will be open. It's an open door, and I'm there to help.
As the former event coordinator for Taste of Tillamook County, that was kind of my first experience in Tillamook County. And I really had the privilege of developing a deep care and concern for the people and places of Tillamook County from Manzanita to Nescauin, Falcon Cove to Pacific City. And, and my record and engagement in organizations throughout Tillamook County exemplifies that. It's important to me to celebrate the best of Tillamook County, to protect the quality of life of our citizens. Commissioner Bartline talked about legacy. It's important to me that, that I protect our quality of life and improve our quality of life. And for every citizen, that means something a little bit different. And uniquely, I think I bring to the position experience in both the public and private sectors. I have a common sense approach to decision-making, and I'm a strong leader with a balanced and collaborative approach to problem-solving.
So, thank you again. Like Commissioner Bartline, I think I'm going to stand on my record. When you look at the 20-plus governmental and civic activities that I've been involved in, while continuing to work full-time at both Long Term Care Insurance and now with Realtor, I think I can divide my time pretty well. And when you look at, at the variety of, of issues and programs that I've been involved with, I have a deep caring for Tillamook County. One difference, I think, is that I don't think leadership is about putting out fires as they come up. You have to have a vision and a plan, and you have to implement that plan moving forward. Putting out fires, I don't think is in anyone's best interest. You have to understand that every resident of this county has good ideas about what is good about Tillamook County. We may not always agree on every aspect, but sitting down and talking, making sure that I understand the issues and you understand where I'm coming from, I think that's really important. I think together, we have an opportunity to influence the possible direction for the future of Tillamook County. And I ask you to join me in that.
So, folks, there were some questions that weren't asked. I would encourage you to reach out to folks that you'd like to hear from at some other venue or person-to-person, they're open for that. I also encourage you to bring them back during the general election because you'll have to go through this again. Yes, sir.
I wanna thank these people.
Well, that's what I was just gonna do.
There are six people up here, and if we had 500 more like them as are in Congress, we'd have no problems at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, AAUW, Tillamook Headlight Herald, the Tillamook Bay Community College, the Tillamook Chamber of Commerce, our wonderful candidates, and all of you for sticking it out. Thank you very much.